I would like to call the Monday, May 24th, 2021 Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for the council and for yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your requests in the chat, and directions to do so are located in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name, your address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. Again, insert your name and your address and what you would like to speak on for or against which agenda item. Where citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat, and the council president will call on you during the relevant time for public input. Again, insert your name and your address, and you will then be given three minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself before speaking.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I would like to read the statement. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual, without notice, losing the remaining of his or her allotted time. At this time, our invocation will be given by Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan, at-large Councilwoman.
Thank you, President White. Loving God, protector of all, we ask you to watch over our city and to watch the residents of our city, our children, our seniors, those who go hungry, the houseless, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, and those who are alone. Creator of good, thank you for the men and women who serve our city in various ways, our staff members, public safety officers, those in leadership roles. We ask you to bless this council, oh God. Guide our decisions. Give us humility, love, and wisdom to serve and to advocate for all residents in our community. In this, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Henry here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President McBride.
Present.
President White.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. We'll now have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Jones, will you please read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes, please?
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the April 26th, 2021 meeting and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
I would now like to entertain a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. There is no special business at this time, as well as there are no reports from city offices. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Attorney Palmer, do I need to have the roll call? Or can I just?
No, President White.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion, it's been seconded. All council members who are in favor of the motion might hear you vote. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the meeting where the bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation and proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Before our first bill is Bill 8621, Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 8621 a second reading?
8621, public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 617 North Cushing Street, Councilmanic District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. This came before the Zoning and Annexation Committee and was brought forth with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, thank you, Council Joe Molnar, zoning specialist with office is on the 14th floor of the county city building, serving as the zoning representative for today. My item before you right now is rezoning from Urban Neighborhood 1 to Urban Neighborhood 2 at 617 Cushing. This property is located in the near northwest neighborhood, just north of Lincoln Way. Here, a little bit of background on the property. The property itself was constructed in 1892. It was a historic, it is a historic landmark in the city of South Bend, and that also contains the carriage house behind the main property. You can see here, this is a shot of the house in 2019. The new owners purchased it, and they have been putting some work into it. The property, the main building, had been divvied up into some sub-appartments. The new owner is remedying that. This is what the site looks as about a month ago. As you can see, quite a bit of work has been done to restore the building and also to restore the carriage house at the back. This rezoning to go from U1 to U2 essentially allows the property to be used as it was originally constructed back in the 1890s. So the main house will be one unit, and the rear ADU or carriage house will also be one unit, which is access off the alley. Here is another shot, getting the spinning wheel. Just immediately to the south of this property are, all the properties are zoned U2 Neighborhood 2, so this won't be a dramatic change to the zoning map in that area. I apologize for raising up on me. There we go. Oh, I've lost everything. All right. Besides that, though, the staff, sorry about that.
That was great.
Lost it all. But I think everyone was in committee, so you got the gist of the point. The staff is sending it with a favorable recommendation, and it also was a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission, essentially allowing it to go to U2, Urban Neighborhood 2 allows for the property to be used as it was originally intended. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I know the petitioner is on as well.
Does the petitioner wish to make any comments? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Reed Comstock. I'm the petitioner. I live here in South Bend at 409 Waukeah Avenue. I don't really think I can add anything to the presentation that Joe has just given. I think that was pretty thorough, but I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Okay, seeing none, at this time, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill 8621?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 8621.
Is there anyone speaking against Bill 8621?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak against Bill 8621.
Okay, thank you. Then at this point, the public hearing on Bill 8621 is now closed. Councilmembers, do you wish to make any statements regarding?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. First, Mr. Molnar, I think we quickly voted, and your kid's got a favorable recommendation.
They're pretty cute.
You can tell Danielle that. I just want to thank Mr. Comstock for his investment in the community, and was mentioned by Ms. Hammond earlier. This is one of the ways we get more housing stock and more affordable housing stock in the city. Thank you.
Councilman Lee.
I would just like to say to Mr. Comstock, to see the difference from 2019 to 2021 in what you've done is impressive. You know, these older houses, they need to love, and when people invest in them, they invest in their neighborhoods. We appreciate that. We appreciate you taking that opportunity to invest in the neighborhood, and it's going to be more than a multifamily opportunity, and right now, housing is such a critical issue in our city, so thank you for the investment.
Councilwoman Tomas Morgan.
I just want to add to my colleagues' thanks, but also, Mr. Comstock, want to remind you, if you don't know already, that as a potential landlord, to just ask you to register the property in the landlord registration. Thank you.
Is there any other council members that wish to make a statement? Okay, seeing none, I'll now entertain a motion regarding Bill 8621.
I move that we send 8621 to the full council.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motioned and seconded. Do we have to do a formal roll call? Yes.
I think it was just a motion to refer to the full council, but.
With a favorable. With recommendation.
You said the full council.
With favorable, sorry, favorable recommendation. Left that part off. Okay.
Okay, so there has been a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll call?
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 8621 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Moving on to Bill 8821, there is a request for a continuance. Can I hear a motion?
Move that Bill 8821 is continued to 614.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, and it has been seconded to continue Bill 8821 until June the 14th. Could we call the roll call, please?
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 8821 will be continued until June 14th. So I will now entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and report back to the full council. It's been moved a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the Committee of the Whole. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 86-21 a third reading?
Yes. 8621, third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 617 North Cushing Street, Councilmanic District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding Bill 86-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 8621 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now.
I move that 8621 for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Well, now moving into the resolution portion of our council meeting, this is the portion of the meeting where the common council will hear bills filed as proposed resolution. The title of the proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee to which the bill was referred to for an advisory review and recommendation is then given. During the public hearing portion on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal from the presenter of the bill. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 21-22?
2122, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, in support of proclaiming the month of September as Hope for the Day's 2021 National Suicide Prevention Action Month.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, this resolution was heard before the Health and Public Safety Committee today, and it was sent to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We do have a sponsor. We do ask that you state your name and your address regarding Resolution 21-22.
Thank you, President White. Lori Hammond, office on the fourth floor of the county city building. I was contacted several months ago from a representative of Hope for the Day, and we had a couple of different conversations regarding the desire to have municipalities around the globe pass this resolution in advance of September, and to do some homework to find who the providers in the community are, and to make sure that we start the very important work of informing and educating the community about those providers, and how we can assist people that are suffering with suicide ideations. If I may, I'd like to read through the resolution, and then we do have another presenter also. Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention and Action Month, and the National Suicide Prevention and Action Month was created to raise the visibility of the mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. And whereas the goal is to start a conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas according to the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34 in the United States. And whereas, in 2019, there was an estimated 1.38 million suicide attempts in the United States, with more than 47,000 people dying, equaling 130 suicides per day. And the statistics for 2020 have the potential to be even more shocking, excuse me, shocking due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas, the South Bend Common Council publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas, global organizations like Hope for the Day and our local mental health partners, St. Joseph County Suicide Prevention Center, Oaklawn Mental Health Services, and the Stop 22 Michiana, serve on the front lines of a war that too many refuse to discuss because the stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. And whereas, the South Bend Common Council encourages all residents to take time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of oneself and others includes taking care of mental health. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section 1, the mission of suicide prevention is a mission that must be pursued every single day, not just during Suicide Prevention and Action Month. Section 2, residents are encouraged to learn more about suicide prevention in the months leading up to Suicide Prevention and Action Month, and to use that knowledge to inform others as to make Suicide Prevention and Action Month an effective tool to help those at risk. Section 3, the South Bend Common Council encourages the mayor of South Bend to publicly proclaim the month of September as Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the city of South Bend. And before I turn over to Dr. Lauberman, I would like to just inform the council that I have been in contact with the mayor also.
Thank you.
Dr. Lauberman.
President White, members of the council, many thanks to Lori Hammond for bringing this to our attention from Hope for a Day.
Dr. Lauberman, would you share your home address?
Oh, yes.
For the record.
Kent Lauberman, my work address is 6910 North Main Street, Granger. My home address is Niles, Michigan, 1845 Champlain Drive. So, starting over again, President White, council members, many thanks for bringing this, letting Lori and the Hope for a Day bring this to our attention. Our common objective is Awareness of Suicide Prevention Month, which is September, as indicated, but it's also Suicide Prevention Week, which is the 5th through the 11th of September, and we focus on a day, Suicide Prevention Day, which is September 10th, 2021. As Lori indicated, in 2019, per the CDC, 12 million in the U.S. have thought about suicide. In the last year, 3.5 have made a plan. 1.38 million have attempted suicide, and 47,511 have died by suicide. In 2019, Lori indicated 130 suicides per day, and one person has died in the last 11 minutes. And that 130 people include 20 veterans per day, and certainly 12 young people per day. The goal objective for September is to reduce the stigma attached to suicide through education and awareness, and promote mental health and wellness efforts through one prevention, and that's all the programs that we can provide in the schools, including the Yellow Ribbon Program, Oaklawn Sources of Strength Under grant that will be starting this fall, QPR, Veterans Administration, the Jason Foundation, Living Works. There's many, many programs, we just need to put them in gear. The second item is intervention. Just as we train for life-saving skills in first aid and CPR, we can chain and provide the skills for saving a life due to suicide. And that's pretty easy under the Yellow Ribbon Program. There's three steps that we teach the young people in junior high school and high school, and that is to stay with the person, to listen to that person, and then refer to help. We can all be gatekeepers, ambassadors, and we can save the 10th leading cause as far as everybody dying by suicide, or the second leading cause of death by our young people. The third item is postvention. That's the survivors of suicide. We do have a survivor support group that's been meeting for more than a year by Zoom, and it's a very active kind of group, and this year, there is a grant throughout the state of Indiana to develop a loss team, local outreach to suicide survivors. And this is somebody from the team that will be contacting, probably somebody referred by the police or referred by the coroner's office, and we don't do therapy with this team. We share with that survivor all of the resources that are available in the community. So in summary, we need to focus on suicide prevention, intervention, postvention, not only in the month of September, but in every day, because suicide is the most preventable death that we can work on. That concludes my remarks.
I don't see anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolution 21. Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
I don't see anyone waiting to speak in opposition as well.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. I would go to council members to see if you would like to make any comments at this time.
I would, President White.
Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski.
Thank you.
Followed by Councilman Kenneth Lee.
Thank you, President White. I would like to thank Councilwoman Hammond for asking me to be a co-sponsor on this bill. Many of you don't know this, but our family has been touched by suicide, and it does two things to family. It either pulls you together, it makes you closer, or it tears you apart. So when I heard about the third option for the post-action for survivor, resources available in the community, it is so important. And that's all I'm going to say. There is something else I wanted to say, but I don't think it's appropriate. But I would say that the resources are available. If they are, we need to get them out to people, because it is the hardest time in a family's life to try and cope, to try and understand. And the big thing is, sometimes there just isn't an understanding, it's just coping. So I would like to thank you, Councilwoman Hammond, for allowing me to co-sponsor this.
Councilman Kenneth Lee, followed by Councilwoman Sharon McBride.
I would like to thank the presenter and Councilwoman Lori Hammond for bringing this to our attention and allowing me to also co-sponsor this. People never realize what other people are going through, and so we definitely have to be on the front lines of helping to deal with the mental illness or the depression that has gone on with people and those who are prone to do suicidal acts. So my family has been affected by it, and I lost a very good friend to suicide, and it's devastating. And so, if we as a city can come together and be able to get awareness and resources, or even the information about what's available to our community, then that's something that we definitely need to make sure happens, because it is a devastating thing to go through that, and it's even more devastating to go through it and feel like you have no resources or no support. So, again, thank you, Councilwoman Lori and Dr. Lauberman. Thank you for all the work that you guys are doing, and this is going to make South Bend a better place. So, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Sharon McBride.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond, for bringing this important issue to council, and also to you, Mr. Lauberman. We appreciate you and your work. Again, I would just reiterate for the record that just about a week ago, I got a call from my niece that a friend of hers tried to commit suicide, and she called me. So, one of the things is knowing what resources we have and where to get those is very, very important. Also, in the line of work that I do in corrections. Also, in the line of work that I do in corrections, there have been attempts or talk about suicide ideation. So, it is very good cause, and I definitely would like to get, you know, more information to make sure that not only my clients, but that we can get the word out to the residents of South Bend that help is here. So, thank you.
Any other council person like to make any comments at this time?
I would like to echo all of the comments made by the council members, and to thank Councilwoman Lori Hammond for giving me the opportunity to be one of the sponsors, and to also to thank Dr. Kent Lauberman for your work that you have continued to do since your retirement from IU South Bend. So it's nice seeing you again. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 21-22.
I move for passage.
I'll second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Resolution 21-22 has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 21-23? 2123, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana approving the city's request to opt out of examinations by the Indiana State Board of Accounts and selecting a certified public accountant to conduct the examinations pursuant to Indiana Code 5-11-1-24.4. Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President White, this comes to you out of the Personnel and Finance Committee with a favorable recommendation.
I do know that we have a sponsor, and we ask, I mean, I'm sorry, a presenter. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, President White. It's Dan Parker. I am the city controller. My office is on the 12th floor of the county city building. So I will just go through a brief presentation with you, which is the same presentation that we went through in committee this afternoon. If you remember back to March, this is sort of the fulfillment of the first resolution that council passed back on March 8, which is regarding the hiring of an independent CPA firm to perform the city's financial statement audit. So, just to explain the title of the resolution, although it says opting out of the State Board of Accounts audit, the reason why it says that is because we are proposing to hire an independent CPA firm to perform the audit in lieu of the State Board of Accounts. So it's not as though we won't have an audit at all, rather, we would just contract with an independent firm. They would perform the audit in accordance with the guidelines established by the State Board of Accounts, and then deliver the completed report to both council and to the State Board of Accounts. And this, if we were to pass the resolution this evening, would make South Bend the second city in Indiana to pursue this option of hiring the independent CPA firm. So this is a diagram that we've used a few times through this process. So you see the first step on the left is that first resolution passed on March 8, which created an audit committee composed of three members, two of them appointed by council, including Councilmember Troy Warner, and then one member appointed by the mayor. On March 31 and April 28, the audit committee held two meetings. The first one to establish the factors or the criteria by which they would select an independent CPA firm, and then the second meeting on April 28 to review proposals that were submitted from interested firms. We received five proposals. They then formulated, the audit committee then formulated a report on May 14. And then, this is where we are in the third step, to pass a resolution to accept the audit committee's recommendation to hire an independent firm, and then authorize the city to submit a request to the State Board of Accounts to opt out of the examination by the State Board. Just briefly, the RFP selection criteria, the report criteria, report categories of criteria, I should say, qualifications and experience, audit implementation methodology, staff continuity and quality, and then audit fee. The weights of those criteria are as shown on the screen. The audit committee, this was determined by the audit committee, the audit committee felt that qualifications and experience and implementation methodology should be most highly weighted, even more so than audit fee, because firms that are highly qualified and are able to handle the city's sort of complex financial transactions are likely to show, give us some efficiencies through their audit implementation, and so we're likely to see some savings just by not having to spend as long on the audit itself. The city received five proposals from the RFP that was released by the committee. As required by the statute, we ranked the top three. So the top three were BKD, RSM, and Baker Tilly. You can see how each of those firms fared with respect to each of those buckets of criteria. And you can see that BKD and RSM, per the audit committee's evaluation, ended up tied at 266, that's out of 300 points. And so the audit committee in putting together their report recommended selecting BKD, because, as you can see just below that, the cost of BKD was quite a bit less than RSM. The last thing I want to just go through is, why are we doing this at all? Why are we trying to opt out of the State Board of Accounts audit and instead hire a private firm? We went through this at the March 8 meeting, but just to briefly go back through, efficiency and time savings is the biggest key, and to highlight, a thing that I highlighted in committee this afternoon, this is more important than ever. State Board of Accounts doesn't have the capacity to perform the city's audit currently. There's a lot of political subdivisions going to full accrual GAAP accounting that have never done that before, which means the State Board of Accounts has to audit a lot more in-depth, many, many more entities than they ever have in the past. And so generally speaking, our audit runs from April to May-June, late June. It's now late May, almost June, and our audit has not yet begun. And that's, we provided the financial statements to the State Board of Accounts on time, April 1, when it was requested, and the State Board of Accounts just doesn't have the capacity to actually perform the audit on a timely basis. In addition, oversight and independence is important. The option actually increases oversight. We have an independent firm that comes in, hired by council. They review our financial statements, making sure that our financials are presented fairly and in accordance with accounting principles. And then SBOA, the State Board, actually reviews the firm's work. So it actually increases oversight, as well as independence. We go to the State Board for a lot of accounting guidance types of questions, and so generally speaking, you want to separate out the entity that's providing accounting guidance from the entity that is providing your financial statement audit. And then lastly, as I kind of alluded to, the complexity of the city financials. The South Bend is one of the largest cities in Indiana, and we're just not the typical audit client for the State Board of Accounts. We have a lot more complex financial transactions. We go out to the bond market often, and we really can benefit from a firm that specializes in organizations of our size and our complexity. So I will leave it there, but happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions that you would like to ask Mr. Dan Parker? Seeing none, I will now go to the public hearing portion back, I mean, the hearing portion, and then we'll circle back to council members who would like to make any statements. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in favor of this resolution? I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 2123. Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
There is no one waiting to speak in opposition as well.
The public hearing portion is now closed. Councilmembers, do you want to make any statements at this time? Seeing no one. I'm sorry. Councilman Eli Wax?
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Dan, for the hard work in going through this process, and thank you, Troy, for stepping up as part of the council representation. I know a lot of hard work went into it, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council members? If not, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 21-23. So moved. Second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Warner?
I assume it's a motion for passage?
Yes, it is.
Motion for passage, thank you.
Then it's an aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Resolution 21-23 has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 2124? Excuse me. 2124, resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana approving an agreement extending the St. Joseph County Housing Consortium and authorizing the execution thereof. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President White. Bill number 2124 came to Community Investment this afternoon and comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. 2124 and 2125 are all read for public hearing, purposes of public hearing, voted on separately.
Okay. Councilmember Davis, I think 2124 is a separate one. The motion would be made when we get to 2125.
I'm sorry, that's my mistake.
You're fine, no problem.
That's my mistake, I thought I heard you say that earlier.
No problem, we'll hear those two next.
Okay, sorry.
But thank you, there's no problem. We do have a presenter. We ask that you state your name and address.
Thank you, Chairman White, President White, sorry. My name is Pam Meyer. I'm the Director of Neighborhoods for the Department of Community Investment, with offices on the 14th floor of this building. The resolution before you authorizes Mayor Mueller to sign an inter-local agreement with the city of Mishawaka and the county to renew the St. Joe County Housing Consortium. The consortium was established in 1991, and it was done so as a means to receive federal home program dollars from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The board is structured so that each jurisdiction and the highest elected official appoints two members each to represent their jurisdiction on the board. The current inter-local agreement ends on 12/31/2021, and this will extend it for three years until 12/31/2024. I would be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions regarding Resolution 21-24? Seeing, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolution 21-24?
I don't see anyone from the public waiting to speak in support of 21-24.
Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
I don't see anyone waiting to speak in opposition as well.
The public hearing portion is now closed. I will return to council members to see if you would like to make any comments at this time. Seeing, I would like to entertain a motion.
Move for passage.
Second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Resolution 21-24 has been adopted. Now, Councilmember Davis?
Uh-uh, you do it.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion that, for purposes of the public hearing only, that Resolution 21-25 and Resolution 21-27 would be heard.
All right, man.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Do I do roll call? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll now go back to Resolution 21-25. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 21-25? Yes, 2125, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 906 through 910 Portage Avenue and 736 California Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46616, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a four-year real property tax abatement for the Bakery Group LLC. Thank you. We also read Resolution 21-27. 2127, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 906 through 910 Portage Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46616, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a two-year vacant building tax abatement for the Bakery Group LLC. Is there a committee report regarding these two resolutions?
There is, President White. This came to, both bills came to Community Investment this afternoon and come to council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I do believe that we will have a presentation from Community Investment, followed by the petitioner. We do ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. This is Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development, offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. We are very excited to bring to council something we've been working on with the bakery team for quite some time, over a year. Each of the partners have individual track records, they're very successful, and really brings together a dream team to really create a renaissance for this building, and we think will have a ripple effect throughout the neighborhood. They are considering $3.7 million in private investment on this 56,000-square-foot building. Notable that it was purchased in tax sales, so it had been vacant and abandoned for some time, and had significant unpaid tax liabilities. So it will be great to give them a little assistance as we recommend these tax abatements, we hope, and then get them back in the tax rolls in a few years here with 60 planned retail and community units, which I'll let them talk about, and then I can come back and summarize each of the bills and answer any questions about the tax abatements themselves. So I'll introduce Mike Keane, allow him to take the floor.
My name is Mike Keane. I'm president of the Bakery Group LLC. I live at 1012 Riverside Drive in South Bend, Indiana, 46616. We've been working in this neighborhood, in the near northwest neighborhood, for the last almost five years to try to contribute to what has already been ongoing redevelopment efforts, largely led by the Near Northwest Neighborhood Organization and several local neighbors. We ourselves have partnered with the Habitat for Humanity to build five new homes, produce as much energy as they use just north of the building. In addition, we have renovated two mixed-use commercial structures and one residential structure. We have also taken possession of approximately 17 to 20 vacant lots and begun to maintain those as well. The sort of what we say is the elephant in the room, however, is sitting right in the middle of this whole thing, and that is the former Ward Bakery Building, abandoned in 2012. It has become a neighborhood nuisance, and it has been declining or suppressing both home and property values, as well as potential tax assessments. It also has led to a sense of people both, you know, who don't know our neighborhood, that this is a neighborhood that is not a pleasant place to be. This is unfortunate, because this building is a beautiful building, and its former grandeur would have been one of the finest buildings in the city of South Bend. The north, near northwest neighborhood itself had tried for six years to get tax credit grants in order to turn this into affordable housing, workforce housing, or elderly housing, but were unsuccessful. So what we are doing is, we're proposing a market-based private initiative that will allow us to renovate this building and turn it into a commercial node, what we call a collaborative village, that will allow us to offer space for businesses, retail, professional offices, maker's space, cultural arts space, as well as folks like tax accountant, insurance agents, health and wellness. We also anticipate a couple of cafes and turning the south parking lot into, part of it into a public plaza, to really become a sort of, help reestablish the commercial node that was at this neighborhood when I first came to South Bend some 30 years ago. the commercial node that was at this neighborhood when I first came to South Bend some thirty years ago. We really appreciate the support that we've been getting from the neighborhood, our partnership with the Near Northwest Neighborhood Organization and the partnership that we've been able to develop with the, uh, the, uh, Community Investment, Office of Community Investment. And I think at this point, I'll just sort of, uh, let, uh, the councilmate has any other questions, ask me if you want additional information or clarification, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keane. Prior to going to the councilmembers for question, I would ask, um, Dan Buckenmeyer to give a summary, and I do know that two questions were asked during the committee portion as well.
Yes, can you hear me? I'm having trouble muting and unmuting and keeping my presentation, sorry. Assuming you can hear me, uh, as brief summary, just of the two abatements here. The, uh, I'll start with the vacant, uh, the second, twenty-one twenty-seven. So consider the fact that there is a baseline, uh, amount that is being paid in tax right now. Just to be very clear about what these two abatements are and how they work together. The vacant building tax abatement is an incentive, uh, for folks to do just this. Take buildings that have been long vacant, make the added and significant, uh, investment in rehabilitating them and bringing them back into use. So it takes the existing taxes and brings them down to, at least for one year, down to zero and then year two phases in at seventy percent. Now, the second abatement, the real property tax abatement, just to again clarify, the real property tax abatements only look at the assessment increase. So when the, uh, improvements are actually made, the assessor comes out and says, hey, beautiful building, bang, I'm gonna up your taxes. We give a break on that, uh, in this case for four years. A phase in, uh, uh, starting at a hundred percent for year one, then ninety, eighty, seventy. So these two work together to really help the, uh, investors here make the most in, uh, being able to have a little break in, uh, the ramp into property taxes on their investment. But at the end of that four years, uh, in year five, it's gonna be paying full, uh, full tax amount. So if there are any further questions, um, I'll open it up to that.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner, Mr. Mike Keane, or Mr. Dan Buckenmeyer? Any question? Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan, and I believe Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Okay. Mr. Keane, would you be able to, um, share what the timeline is for the building?
Yeah, basically, uh, we're looking at a timeline where we hope, uh, to be able to, uh, in the next year, uh, complete, uh, the renovation of the building and get the first tenants in. We project a thirty percent occupancy in, in, in year one. And then, and, and we will not be able to renovate the entire building at once. This is not a project that allows us to do that. So what we need to do is, is stabilize the building, get, uh, gas, electric, water into it. And then, uh, begin to build out, uh, the south portion probably is where we'll start and get some tenants in. That will allow us then, after we do that first increment, then to work on a phase two, which will allow us to build out the next portion of the building, which we anticipate will take a year two to seventy percent occupancy. And then we're projecting by the end of three year, year three, we would be to, uh, a full occupancy, uh, and a full build-out.
Thank you, Mr. Keane.
Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
The other thing that is not, um, really demonstrated, and I was surprised during the tour, is the space that is provided in the upper floor and there is also a usable basement space that has incredible building pillars down there. So the history in the building is really phenomenal.
Are there any other questions?
Miss, miss?
I'm gonna circle back for comments, but if you have a question, Councilwoman Lee, that's no problem.
Yeah, I, I did have a question, just again, um, what made you guys decide to take on this, this initiative?
Uh, as I said, um, we've been working in this neighborhood for the last five years. I'm part of, uh, a group called the Incomel Development Alliance. Uh, our goal is to help to, uh, educate a thousand small-scale developers to begin to create wealth in their neighborhood for their neighborhood. And I've been leading a group of people that have been doing that in several neighborhoods in South Bend. And the fact of the matter is, is this is killing us all. And so, uh, when the NNN was unable to get it, uh, for the sixth tax credit grant they applied for, my first response was tear it down, but, uh, for a variety of reasons, we have been bringing the founder of the Incomel, uh, Development Alliance, guy by name of Monte Anderson, who has done a building very similar to this, although twice the size in Texas, up to South Bend to help us and the city with some consulting matters. And when he saw this building, he said, this building is too good, uh, to let go, we have to do something with it. And for the first time ever, he agreed to come in and actually invest and be part of a partnership outside of his own area where he developed in South Dallas of Duncanville. Once he committed to the building, I was able to talk to, uh, my partner, Dwayne Borckholder, who we had already invested now almost one point five million dollars of private investment, uh, in this area. And he agreed, and then the architect, Greg Kill, who is known for his, um, local architect and restoration of old buildings, said, I not only want to be the architect, I want to be a partner. And so quite frankly, uh, this is, has to be done in order to make this neighborhood work. If we weren't to do this building, then what we would have to do is ask the city to knock it down, uh, and that would cost itself probably half a million dollars. And here we have a beautiful art deco building with, uh, just a lot of bones to it, but it needs some serious work. And we really think that there's a, a model to make this happen called Tyler Station down in Texas. We think we can replicate that here, uh, and so we just felt it was really important to go ahead with this project.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, I go to, I will go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolutions twenty-one dash twenty-five or twenty-one dash twenty-seven?
There is, excuse me, there is no one from the public waiting to speak in favor of Resolution twenty-one twenty-five or twenty-one?
Thank you, is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
There is no one waiting to speak in opposition as well.
The public hearing portion is now closed. Councilmembers, are there any, if, do you want to make any comments? Any councilmember would like to make comments at this time? Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan?
I said this earlier, but I really want to thank Mr. Keane for his bold vision in this place, believing in this building and in the neighborhood, and we look forward to the success ahead.
Councilmember Kenneth Lee?
Yes, I would, um, also like to echo the sentiments of, uh, my council colleague, Rachel Tomas Morgan. If you all saw the picture of the demolished side of that building, it takes a lot of heart, takes a lot of faith, to have vision to see something that other people can't see. So I am really, really excited, um, for Mike to have vision, to want to invest in our neighborhood, uh, and also to bring back to life, uh, a building that did great things for the city. So this is very important and if we're, if, 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 if South Bend is gonna be back alive, things are gonna change. And just having something that is really well-done in, in that area is going to, to, to help bring hope to people. And hopefully these businesses that will be a part of this will be, will be, uh, businesses that can impact the lives of the community and, and make South Bend a better place to live. So I'm excited for the vision and look forward to seeing it come into pass.
Thank you. Are there any, Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
And, um, going off of what Councilman Lee mentioned, we have so many incubator programs for businesses that, um, during my tour, Mr. Keane did mention trying to, um, get involved with a number of those different, um, programs and provide a place for those businesses to get their start. So this is the perfect place for that.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding, uh, Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-five.
Vote for passage.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-five has been adopted. I will now entertain a motion regarding Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
I move for passage of twenty-one twenty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven has been adopted. I would like to entertain a motion to hear Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-nine and twenty-one dash thirty-one together for purposes of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-nine?
Twenty-one twenty-nine. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-four twenty-five West Lathrop Drive, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a four-year real property tax abatement from McCormick and Company, Inc.
Thank you, will you also read Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-one?
Twenty-one thirty-one. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-four twenty-five West Lathrop Drive, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement from McCormick and Company, Inc.
Is there a committee report regarding Resolution twenty-one twenty-nine and twenty-one thirty-one?
Yes, President White, both bills came to Community Investment Committee this afternoon and come, both come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, we'll now go to the presentation portion. I do believe that there is a presentation from Community Investment followed by the presenters.
Correct, thank you again, council. Uh, Dan Buckenmeyer, Director Business Development, uh, offices fourteenth floor of the city, uh, County City Building. So, uh, recently, uh, McCormick and Company, uh, saw a large chunk of business, the, the business that really encompassed their, their South Bend facility transition out. We, uh, hate to see that happen in South Bend and sometimes the easy decision for a company is to just shutter or, or let those jobs and opportunities go. We are very grateful that, uh, McCormick and Company has been working with us to, um, pave the way for an additional investment and, and it's a significant investment between, uh, an expansion of the building and purchase of new equipment. They will be investing about forty million dollars in the South Bend facility. They are committing to keep eighty, eighty jobs, a, a, a minimum of eighty jobs, uh, in the, the community as a result. And again, we're just very grateful for the opportunity to work with them. We bring this to council obviously with a, a, uh, favorable recommendation from staff. So starting with the, uh, real property tax abatement, uh, they will be adding fifteen thousand square feet of new processing, uh, space to the existing facility with an investment of about eighteen million dollars. And then the new equipment that will go into, to that will be, uh, about twenty-four million in, and I won't read the whole thing, but you can see it on the slide there, uh, uh, bottling and, uh, packing equipment and so on for Frank's Red Hot Sauce. So, um, I will pause there and allow Deirdre Cassidy and Reginald Davis to, uh, chime in from McCormick and Company and please share your name and address as you go through and share anything else you'd like to share.
Awesome, thank you very much for having me, my name is Reginald Davis. I am the plant manager at thirty-four twenty-five Lathrop Street, uh, the property in concern here. A few years ago, our company bought a very, very, uh, fast-growing brand. That brand is, uh, exceeding expectations in growth and the growth in our Missouri facility has been in excess of the capability of, of that land and buildings. Therefore, uh, uh, the, we want to add, uh, our, uh, facilities, grow our facilities and put machinery in so that, that we can participate in the overall growth of the condiments and business for, uh, for our plant. We're, we're excited about that. South Bend is working, uh, to take that volume and other volumes that's available to us should we make these improvements to, 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 uh, participate in the overall growth strategy of the company. And we have a primary growth strategy in condiments that the South Bend plant is trying to get, uh, brought to the facility and this, uh, this abatement, uh, will help us with this project and a few other major projects coming. You saw the slide, that's, consists of simply additional packaging, additional making, additional distribution systems, so that we could go forward with our support and growth for, uh, the overall company. It, it, it represents a great opportunity for the viability and long-term, uh, success of the plant there, uh, at thirty-four twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Prior to going to the councilmembers to see if they have any questions, Mr. Buckenmeyer, do you have any summary comments you would like to make?
Just again, uh, I'll, I'll summarize that, uh, we are asking for two abatements, one for the real property. So that will, um, mitigate the, uh, uh, impact of the addition of the fifteen thousand square feet and eighteen million dollar investment there. And then the other one is for the actual private property. So as you see on the slide here, the actual capital equipment. I will take a moment to address a question that was brought at committee. I, I, I'll, I'll note that, um, my team member, Angelina Bealow, uh, uh, Assistant Director, was able to track down a little information, uh, that was requested on some tax abatements about ten years ago. In two thousand and eleven, um, uh, a similar situation, if you will. McCormick was looking to, uh, verticalize, bring some, uh, additional functionalities into their existing location. At that point, they did, again, a real property tax abatement. At that time, they did a fifty thousand square foot addition to their manufacturing facility. At that time, they committed to five million dollars in investment. Their actual investment was about seven point, over seven point seven million. So they exceeded expectations there. And then a personal property tax abatement, again, on the capital equipment that they brought in, they committed to eight point one million, they spent eight point nine million, and it created fourteen additional jobs at the time. So they did, uh, exceed all, um, uh, compliance and, uh, requirements and expectations, um, for those abatements at that time. And again, times change, uh, and, you know, they're, they're, um, we're, we're excited to try to support them here and, uh, see them expand again and bring in a new product line and keep these jobs and make additional investment in South Bend. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of, of Mr. Buckenmeyer or the, um, petitioner, Mr. Davis? Thank you for your presentation, I'm sorry. Councilmember, uh, Kenneth Lee?
I just would like, uh, Mr. Davis to just talk about the additional jobs and the diversity of McCormick's here in South Bend for the public.
Yes, our, um, our diversity extends upwards of fifty percent. And, and the, and also for women, we have upwards of forty percent. So you don't really, it's, it's a very comfortable place for every single person of, uh, the United States or the South Bend area, uh, to work in. Potential jobs come as the volume increases, uh, then we, we're able to install additional, uh, jobs and as we are able to successfully And as we are able to successfully, uh, put out the cases, uh, more and more business will be awarded, uh, to the organization. Right now, there are, uh, ten or so other potential items that could help grow the site. Uh, and those numbers are based on, uh, how much actual volume is awarded to the organization.
Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Yes, I just want to take a moment and thank Mr. Buckenmeyer for doing a little bit of extra legwork to address those questions that we had. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions, we'll move to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of resolution twenty-one, twenty-nine or resolution twenty-one, thirty-one?
There is no one from the public waiting to speak in support of these resolutions.
Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
There is no one waiting to speak in opposition of these resolutions.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. Uh, councilmembers, do you want to make any comments at this time? Seeing none.
I'm just saying that, um, it, it's good to see South Bend making things. Um, I've never seen people more passionate about hot sauce and ketchup, but they were very, very passionate about it and, uh, they even had the, uh, display where, um, the Laverne and Shirley, that, that whole bottling system, uh, you know, where the glove goes by, it, it, but it was, uh, it was, it, it's, it's a great, it, it, this, they're, they're going to bring some good paying jobs or continue to keep good paying jobs in the first district and we're excited about that.
We'd like to say thank you for your continued investment into our city and we'll look forward to hearing more about how you continue to move forward. Any other comments? Seeing none. Um, we'll now entertain a motion regarding resolution twenty-one dash twenty-nine.
Move for passage.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-nine has been adopted. Now entertain a motion regarding resolution twenty-one dash thirty-one.
I'd like to move for passage.
Second. We have a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Wax. Councilmember Nizgowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan. Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-one has been adopted. We'll now move into, uh, Bill's first reading. Clerk Jones, would you please read Bill, give a first reading to Bill ninety-one dash twenty-one?
Ninety-one, twenty-one. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at seven oh seven Rex Street.
I'll entertain a motion to send Bill ninety-one dash twenty-one to zoning annexation, uh, committee and public hearing set for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and it's been seconded and I think I can do roll call. All of those in favor of, of the motion, may I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Clerk Jones, would you please give first reading to Bill ninety-two dash twenty-one?
Ninety-two, twenty-one. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at two zero zero one West Washington Street.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to send a Bill ninety-two dash twenty-one to zoning and annexation committee set for public hearing for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All councilmembers who are in favor of the motion might hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Clerk Jones, would you please read ninety-three dash twenty-one?
Ninety-three, twenty-one. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at nine seventeen Lincoln Way West.
I'll entertain a motion to send Bill ninety-three dash twenty-one to zoning and annexation committee and public hearing for June fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All councilmembers who are in favor of the motion might hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Clerk Jones, will you now read Bill ninety-four dash twenty-one?
Ninety-four, twenty-one. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at two thirty-three and two thirty-seven Pagean Street, Councilmaning District Number Two in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I will now entertain a motion to send Bill ninety-four dash twenty-one to the South Bend Plan Commission and public hearing for June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one and send to the zoning and annexation committee, uh, and public hearing for June twenty-eighth.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All councilmembers who are in favor of the motion might hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Clerk Jones, you need a couple of minutes to catch your breath?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Got one more left.
We'll now move to, uh, Bill, give first reading to Bill ninety-five dash twenty-one.
Ninety-five, twenty-one. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property. First East West Alley, north of St. Vincent Street, on the west side of Lawrence Street, running west from Lawrence Street, a distance of a hundred and fifty-nine point thirty-seven feet plus or minus to its termination at a north-south public alley, South Bend, Indiana.
Oh, I didn't move that twenty-five, twenty, ninety-five, twenty-one ago. Some property, uh, public works and private vacation for second and third reading, public hearing on six fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. All councilmembers who are in favor of the motion might hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, two things. First point, the meetings that I have attended, far as what goes on with the neighborhood planning, I've learned there has been some repositioning with departments and who is in control of what department. And there's like several that I remember being a standalone that are now under community investment. I'm not clear on what that organizational chart looks like. I need help.
Okay.
I really do. Uh, and so that when we do have an opportunity to hear from a department, if we know exactly what department we're looking for or who we're asking to come speak. Cause it's jumbled up now. Uh, it's different than what it was before, so.
We can ask for organizational chart.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I need some clarification. I need some clarity there.
Thank you.
Uh, the other thing is that, um, I, I emailed and I don't know if you remember receiving the email or not, but I tried to do a good job of, you know, including all the at-large members when it comes to second district business. But the, I have like an extreme amount of people that the residents asking for speed bumps. It's very, very hot. A lot of that has to do with, uh, the, the way people are traveling. Uh, I'm not going to get into that, but I just know that they want to feel safer in their, um, areas. Um, there is a list that we, you know, try to get on for this street, that street. And if we wait till that list gets full and then obviously those things get implemented, my son will be probably eighty years old by that time. And he's twelve now. So my question is, is there, is there some type of like, can we expedite the time? Can we request like, uh, temporary speed bumps? They have temporary speed bumps in Howard Park, you know, to slow down traffic. How can we get those into our neighborhoods? It may not necessarily be that temporary type of temporary, uh, uh, speed bump, but people are talking about speed bumps more than they're talking about shootings. Or they're, or they're, or they're steering the number one space, um, as, you know, priority. So I, I don't know if that's the conversation that we have with, uh, public works, with Eric Horvath or maybe an engineer, but those requests are serious and I think they deserve a little bit more attention than what we're giving them.
I can reach out to Mr. Horvath and ask him to come under and give an update on speed bumps. And you're correct, I'm seeing more, uh, districts, they're asking about speed bumps, bumps as never before. And even the temporary ones, what does that look like? And I know within, um, especially certain districts, that has been a request for a period of time. So I will send him an invitation to come to our second meeting in June or the first, whichever works best for him to give us update.
How is Miami in, uh, Lincoln Way East? And I know this is not my area, but I keep getting informa- questions about it. Like, that light has been out for like forever. When is that going to be fixed?
We can send that.
Cause that's a major thoroughfare.
Okay. I'm going to ask Clerk Jones if she would reach out to the advancement and ask us to get, uh, send us an organizational chart.
Okay.
Is there any other, um, unfinished business?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Good.
Um, I have a request. I've asked for a couple of different speed studies to be done, um, leading to those speed bumps and, um, traffic calming. But there's no report that comes back and I don't know exactly what to tell the residents because I don't get information back.
Thank you. Edit to the list.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McBride?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on, um, a meeting request for, um, the utilities department. So I wanted to see if we could still have that meeting, Councilman Davis.
What, about the rate raises?
No, about the, uh, utility and, and calls and, um, things that we have not been getting, well, citizens been complaining about not having efficient response.
You can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then.
As a matter of fact, you can put it on the next, uh, uh, time we have. Do you want to have it during council meeting or you want to have it outside?
We can do it during a committee if you don't mind.
We can do it in a committee during a, a, a regular meeting.
Fourteen.
We can put it down for June fourteenth.
Okay.
Is that enough, is that sufficient time? All right. Well, that is, is on there.
Okay. Um, any other unfinished business?
Out.
I'm sorry.
I just would like to see if we can get, um, the code enforcement in to talk about lots and, and mowing and trash. Um, we, we, I, I'm, I'm getting calls from people and I, I've got people burning, burning, uh, stuff in, in, in the community. So I would like to know what, have them be able to explain what is the steps? Because we've got people burning leaves and trash and stuff and I'm getting the calls for it, so.
They don't have enough workers. Uh, my understanding with that is they didn't have as many workers that signed up to be seasonal help. So they're behind on tanning the grass and lots that will ultimately help cleaning them up as well. So the issue is that this council afforded them a budget for those costs and that money is not being used for that cost. So we need to find out where that money is at and hopefully use it to probably put, uh, private contractors to work.
We'll follow up with all of the points. I'll ask, um, Clerk Jones to email me all of the comments that, uh, we've heard under unfinished business and that we'll follow up with those as well. Uh, under new businesses, we'd just like to share that the Morris One Hundred Year Celebration, uh, is forthcoming. Exciting things are happening and the, the private investment has just been overwhelming. Uh, but the committee that has been, uh, formed and there's about four committees that will be working, uh, with the larger committee. Um, and the name of that committee is Equity and the Arts. Uh, the topic is very, uh, timely. And so that I do know that councilmembers, at least some of the councilmembers have been reached in regards to, uh, sharing the dates and the times in which, uh, the committee will be going into the various neighborhoods. I do know one is going to be at Howard Park. I think one is going to be at, um, Pin Hook and one is going to be either at Charles Black or M A K. But I don't want to give you the wrong locations. But I can give you the dates. It's the second Tuesday and Wednesday in June and the third Tuesday, uh, in June, as well as the third Wednesday. A flyer should have been developed, which I think it has. I'll make sure that all councilmembers will get a copy of that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Yes, I have, um, uh, two new businesses. Uh, one is, I just want to announce we're working on a, um, an off Monday night, uh, community investment committee meeting that will, um, occur to give a, um, education session to the council in general briefly about tax abatements, but in, um, particular more foc- focused on post-award reporting, compliance and, and waivers. So I've asked for that, um, session with staff of community investment to, to come to committee sometime between now and June fourteenth. And then President White, just secondly, um, I was noticing, um, on the call, I don't know if this is really new business, but, um, I'd like to acknowledge that there's a, um, a Boy Scout group, an Eagle Scout group that has joined our council meeting. Um, if I'm correct, the, um, the leader of the troop is, is in the meeting. Um, Mr. Philpot, would you like to introduce yourself and, and your scouts if they are on the call?
Um, my dad is Mr. Philpot and he's not here right now.
Okay.
I miss him. Um, and yeah, we'll be having a, another Zoom to talk about this right after.
Wonderful. Okay, so you're a member of the scout troop and you have others with you?
I'm pretty sure. I can't, I don't know who because there's just the two initials, but I think I recognize some of them.
Wonderful. Well, it's, we're glad to have you. It's been a privilege of mine to be able to speak with a number of both Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts over the past couple of months. Glad you could be here and be a civic, um, uh, show your civic responsibility.
Thanks.
And next time, we'll make sure that we will publicly acknowledge you and, uh, welcome you to our meeting where you can see your government in action. And so tell your dad I said hi.
All right.
I haven't.
Councilwoman McBride?
Yes, I just want to bring up, um, in June will be the, uh, anniversary of the Kelly Pub shooting that took place, um, in the third district where eleven victims were shot and one, uh, Brandon Williams was the fatality. Um, so I've been working with the family, um, to have something done on the anniversary, uh, date or, uh, moving it into September where it's National Gun Violence Awareness. And so I've been working with, uh, the mayor's office and, uh, talking to the arts and, uh, different, uh, people and want to see if some of you councilmembers would like to be a part of that. Um, you definitely can do that. We're looking for people to, um, draw, like if you're an artist. Um, we're, one of the things we talked about is having like a mobile unit, um, like an art gallery that will be gone into the different neighborhoods, whether it's, uh, the Charles Martin Center, the Charles Black Center, Martin Luther King Center, different places that the art can be displayed and not just highlighting. We definitely don't want to minimize any victim that, uh, passed away during gun violence. But it was very unusual, uh, circumstance for a mass shooting to occur. So historically, uh, we had one person that, uh, passed away, but not only highlighting, um, Brandon Williams and trying to do some type of scholarship and working with the, uh, going to contact the school corporations. We also want to, um, have some of the high school kids participate in, whether it's an essay and start having an annual, um, event done. And also want to make sure that we are highlighting all victims that have passed over the years to gun violence. So we're trying to gather names to make sure whether we have a wall or something for, um, families to be able to participate in. I wanted to make it known to the entire council that it's something that we've been working on and you're definitely welcome to come, um, if you have any ideas or thoughts or know any people who draw or do any kind of graphic art design, to please let me know. The mayor is on board as well and, um, the park department thinking about having like the, um, art museum and where's Darryl Heller, the
Civil Rights.
The civil rights heritage and, uh, different things like that. and, where's Darryl Heller, the civil rights heritage and different things like that. So I just wanted to bring it to the forefront. Probably by June, we will have a press conference and have some type of event in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other items on the new business? Seeing none, Councilmember Lee?
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Um, just wanted to let everyone know that with the Let Abate Program, we have recorded videos and will be allowing the mayor's office to see it, but we'll be putting that out so that we can continue to get people enrolled in the Let Abate Program.
Thank you. We'll now move to privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting under privilege of the floor to speak?
Actually, I put my computer away, but I didn't see anyone waiting for privilege of the floor.
Someone verify just before.
There is.
Is there someone?
Okay, I would like to read this announcement in regards to privilege of the floor in regards to how that particular portion of our meeting will be handled. Would like to read the statement once again in regards to disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or action will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or action, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice losing the remaining of his or her time, allotted time. Individual who would like to address the council must state their name and residential addresses. They will have a limit to three minutes only to speak under privilege of the floor. You cannot speak in regards to any topics that was part of the agenda. Again, we ask that you state your name and your address based on the concern that you may express. We may send that to a particular department if it does not come under the council, or the council may address that as we move forward. So the person that's waiting to speak under privilege of the floor, we do ask that you state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. And I'm going to ask our attorney to keep time for me.
Yeah, my name is Drew Duncan. I'm located at twenty-one oh three High Street, South Bend. I am coming to the council today to speak about what is the process around the demolition of houses? The issue I'm specifically speaking of is on, it's on High Street. I've spoke to a lot of the neighbors that are actually in the houses that are occupied. And we have a, we have a big issue that we've been trying to kind of deal with for three years. And it comes in the way of twenty-one oh five, where the bricks of the foundation of the house have collapsed into the basement of the home. And the hole is so big, you could fit a washer and dryer side by side down into that hole. And the concern is, you know, school is out now, the kids are playing more in the neighborhood, and they've, they've been playing in the yard a lot lately. So, you know, we've kind of been divvying up the responsibility of kind of shooing them out of the yard and keeping them away from the yard. But there, there's got to be more of a long-term solution to kind of what's going on. And we spoke to code enforcement, we've gotten the neighbors involved, you know, people are calling. We're kind of doing everything that the city asks of citizens to do around these types of issues. And we're kind of just being told, hey, it's, it's going to go on a demo list, but it's not an emergency. The soonest we'd be looking at it is next year. And this, again, this, this hole is really big, and it seems like it should be more of an emergency now before a child falls down, down into the basement of the house.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. We will follow through. Again, I will ask Clerk Jones to make sure that the address that you shared, Mr. Duncan, is two twenty-one oh five High Street?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I want to update that, it's twenty-one oh seven.
Twenty-one oh seven.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, and we will follow up as well. Is there anyone else, else waiting to hear under, to speak under privilege of the floor?
We have, okay. I don't see anyone waiting to speak on privilege of the floor. Mr. Duncan, what's the last?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, am I allowed to get another three minutes? I have a separate issue as well.
Okay, well, you had one three minutes, and you can speak in regards to the three-minute time that you've been allotted. I'm going to ask Attorney Palmer if you've used your three minutes.
He has not, he has forty-five more seconds.
Mr. Duncan, you have forty-five more seconds.
Fantastic, Andrew Duncan, twenty-one oh three High Street. The second issue has to do with the city golf course, which is to the back of High Street. We've had a lot of issues, again, in the, I would say, the past eighteen months, and especially so much so since the construction. Golf balls are damaging not only our house, but our neighbor's house. And just four days ago, a child was struck in the head with the golf ball. And we've been kind of talking to Tony, who runs, who's a golf pro, around kind of what the solution would be, but we have, it hasn't quite been shared with us what the, what the long-term solution to the, the issue will be. In addition to that, the, the claims that we're filing have still not been answered twelve months after they've been filed, in almost the excess of twelve hundred dollars.
Thank you. And we'll make sure that we reach out to the appropriate departments, and hopefully in the next week or so, we'll be able to respond to you.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Clerk Jones, is there anyone else waiting?
There is no one else waiting.
The public hearing portion is now closed, and the Common Council May twenty-fourth meeting is adjourned. Thank you, council members.